It's worth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, sorry. My dog was trying to steal my daughter's food.
Welcome to December eighth, twenty twenty city council meeting roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here. Mayor Procham, the Kira, here. Councilmember Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember McCall?
Here.
The approval of the agenda council. I'll move approval and revise the agenda as presented support in discussion of new agenda. Discussion. We have an agenda. Civic announcements. So would like to open up city council. Say you under the audience like to be talking about anything? That's the one I want to see. Of course, civic council, public discussion. It's open. If anybody is sitting on the audience here on Zoom that wants to talk in public discussion. Any comments? Ain't nobody raise your hand? Okay, discussion approved because the agenda one through twelve. Anybody have any discussion? Now I need a motion. I'm on approval of the consent agenda items one through twelve, Mr. McCall. Support. Any more discussion? Alyssa Sullivan, Amy Aubrey, discussion on the agenda.
I was kind of like McCall already did it.
All right. Okay. Want to make sure you hear us. Motion passes. We have a dissent agenda.
Mister Mayor, I do need to do one thing here. Since we have two members of council that are appearing on Zoom. They need to state from which city they are appearing from with that. Councilmember Aubrey and Councilmember Sullivan, if you could please sort of record state from where you are appearing, what city are you in today?
Joining from Hazel Park, Michigan.
Alyssa Sullivan, also from Hazel Park, Michigan.
You're here. Got the record state that both council members are zooming from Hazel Park, Michigan.
Mister reports ordinance to amend Title fifteen's chapter fifteen point four one copy maintenance code second reading. It will be your pleasure.
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance to amend Title fifteen, chapter fifteen point oh nine, property maintenance code, second reading.
I have a support. Support. Any more discussion? Session. And it has and boards and commissioners, anyone?
Councilmember Andy Aubrey has a petition for a new board of commissioners. You ready to have?
So this is actually a proposal by myself and Councilman LaKiro. We've been discussing for some time, creating some type of board to kind of oversee some of the environmental issues. So I'd like to make a motion to begin the process of forming an environmental sustainability board or commission. This would oversee such things in the city as recycling, climate change, the nature initiative, and any other areas deemed appropriate by the administration and council that may come up in the future.
Okay, and I would support. All right, that's a motion. Okay, we do a discussion for another council member.
I just have one thing I would request that motion maker and support. Give us a number of people for the committee. Five to seven, maybe with an odd number, either five or seven depending upon the interest.
Okay, well, feel that to the administration to draw up a draft for the next year or month. There. Aubrey?
Do we have to amend that at this time or can?
You can just simply make a recommendation and you can. Depending on how many people are interested in it, council can make a appointment.
You stand on your, you stand on your motion?
Yep.
Okay. For those two? Session, session. Motion passes. New business introduction of Hazel Park logo.
Once again, Mister Mayor, this is.
I see we have one other board of commission application. I see one from Andy in the full Washington for. I was kind of fooling with their. The store. Main Street.
I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble hearing.
I'm sorry, I'll repeat that.
No, the, the audio was cutting out.
Yeah, that's hard. I'm, I have an, we all thought have an application for a board of commission from Andy in the full Washington. Of Shadland Avenue for Arts Council Historical Commission for Main Street as a part.
Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Um. First story says arts council. I'd motion to.
Well, usually, again, usually.
Well, they do come from the council, so.
Yeah, usually, why don't we have Arts Council contact her for an interview with the Arts Council so that they know what she's interested, she knows what they're interested in and see if that's.
I agree. It works really.
What can I say? What? Their introduction of Hazel Park logo. Once again, this is Councilwoman Amy Aubrey as well as Jeff Campbell going to be putting it out on the computer. So I'll turn it over to Councilmember Amy.
Go ahead, Amy.
Okay. Um. So last year, myself and a committee made up of residents, staff, business owners, both old and new, began the process of designing a new logo. So I'm happy to present to you tonight our new look, but with the same great heart of Hazel Park. Jeff, can you make that a little smaller so it fills the whole screen?
Yeah, we're gonna do. That and try and move this out of the way.
Oh, there you go. Oh, I see.
Oh, oh, there they go. Okay.
There we go. The best I'm gonna do. Is that good enough?
Yes.
All right.
So, um. Sorry, got my notes up on the screen here. I didn't want to print anything out. So as you can see, um, we've got two logos that are actually up there top right and lower right on the, in the image. So Hazel, Hazel Park's new logo was inspired by the people who call it home. We use surveys completed by the residents during the master plan process, as well as the input from the committee to influence the design. The new logo design highlights the city's growth while still honoring its history. Over the course of its nearly eighty year history, Hazel Park has evolved into a multi, multifaceted city with the warmth of a small town, home to a diverse community of hard workers, artists, families, young professionals, and everyone in between. The city's new logo branding and master plan reflects city's evolving identity while paying homage to the people who built it. So breaking down the elements of the logo. You can see the shade of blue that we have is to represent the denim worn by the blue collar workers who helped build Hazel Park. The mix of residential and commercial buildings in the logo represent Hazel Park's growing community. The natural elements inspired by Hazel Park's namesake, the Hazel, Hazel Nut Bushes. That was something that the committee thought was very important was to include an element of nature in the logo. And the city's tagline also remains the same, prominently displayed with pride, the friendly city. So that's the, the main logo and then the abbreviated version up in the top right is just for use on special correspondence and items like that. So that's, that's kind of it in a Hazel nutshell.
So dorky, I love it. So dorky, I love it.
Um, so yeah, I just, I'm really excited to see the logo start to pop, pop up around town and I'm really grateful to everyone who helped work on this project. It was, it was quite an undertaking. The graphic designer put us through the wringer. We went through, she asked us a lot of questions to make sure that, that we came up with something that really helped represent the city. And I think we accomplished that, so.
Thank you. Reminded me of what Michigan.
Yeah. Mister Mayor, I'd like to thank Councilmember Aubrey for her hard work on that and other members of the committee who put in the time for that. You know, amongst the staff, we liked this logo, we think it's sharp, clean, and very nice. And we're forward to putting local logos on various pieces of equipment and ordering lots of leather headwear on. And we're making. The old logo and seal remains ours. We use it selectively. All three logos are protected. They cannot be used without the express permission of the City of Hazel Park. So again, you know, we encourage folks to embrace the logo. Cannot just use it, print on anything without the permission of the City of Hazel Park.
Thank you. This communication room, the department.
No, the show cause hearing has been removed. We do not have a government official for tonight. We have all been given update on that. We expect more updates coming. The owner of the property was informed today that we expected demolition plant from them very soon. And that if not, this will be back on the.
Communication, department heads, I think the department has any communications they want to bring?
Happy holidays.
James, James Twinkly, anything for the group?
Uh, no.
Chief Pukal, anything for the group?
No, no.
Lisa Christensen, anything for the group?
City Attorney?
Yes, Mister Mayor, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday, a safe holiday. I know this year has been a very trying year for everyone. It's been a trying year for people in the City of Hazel Park. The work here, the people who live here, basically, this year has been not the best year we've ever had. But nonetheless, we're laying foundations, conversion, this is stronger than before. I know keeping on things in Lansing, there are some proposals up there. Again, I always say at every meeting, this is a finance fundamentally broken. And there is one proposal up there that's part of the package being advocated by Michigan Municipal League that will fix one problematic component of the heavy property interaction. And I do so hope that legislature acts to fix that. From time to time, we get complaints from people who purchase new homes in Hazel Park and their taxes go up. The City of Hazel Park has no control over that untapped income procedures. And even though your taxes have gone up, there's heavily requires that we roll back our revenues to see the rate of inflation from our distant tax base. When this happens, you're paying more taxes and the City of Hazel Park is receiving net benefit of nothing. So is a fundamentally broken system at more levels than I would express tonight. This limited amount of time that I have, I just want to say that I urge you to let our legislators know it's important. Support this package or bills because embedded in this package is one easy fix. That will be very helpful to these across in Michigan, still very much deserving. Perhaps on property. So again, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and look forward to the coming year to make it.
Tim Young said, "Happy holidays" from his audio, it's not working, but.
Very soon. And I did have COVID nineteen last month and I wanted to thank everybody who wished me well. I feel great today. And again, I wish everybody a very healthy. Be safe. Wear your mask. Wash your hands.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sullivan?
Um, I wanted to thank, my headphones are not working today, so I hope everybody can hear me. I wanted to thank Ed for that, talk about the taxes, because we all did have residents reach out to us with concern about their taxes. And I'm wondering if we can put some more information on our website about how the taxes in Hazel Park are computed so that, so that people have a better understanding of that. I did mention to the resident that reached out to me that I am looking to speak to some higher authorities in making disclosure of untapped tax rates somewhere, some part of legality when purchasing and selling properties. Because I really find it frustrating and disappointing that real estate agents are not informing their clients what happens when your taxes are untapped when you purchase a property. It happened to me and I know a lot of people it's happened to and it can really take the rug out from under you when your taxes untapped after somebody owned your home for forty years and now it's being assessed at not only the current rate, which is significantly higher than it was forty years ago, but also the, the assessed value of your home, which is also going to be significantly higher than it was forty years ago. And I think that it's really, it's, it's an injustice to our community that residents are not, that people are not being made aware of this when they're looking to purchase in our community. And I, and I really think that that's a, it's not an okay business practice. I do want to wish everybody happy holidays. I want to remind people to continue to wear your masks, socially distance. Please do not travel for the holidays. I know our governor spoke about the Michigan Health Department in action of a further extension of the restrictions. And I just want to say that I, I know that we're all struggling and, you know, keep putting it to our people in Lansing to get, get, get reprieved and get some bill passed before they shut down for the season. Because that's the only way people are gonna survive this financially. It's, it's just devastating to everyone. So thank you, everybody, and say thanks and happy holidays and enjoy our life.
Thank you. Councilperson Aubrey?
Okay. Some of you know what's coming, some of you may not. I'm very nervous. Um, so I wanted to tell everybody, some of you know, some of you don't, today's my, today's my last city council meeting. I'm gonna be moving. And I will unfortunately no longer be a resident of Hazel Park. I'm saddened to leave clearly. I'm crying, trying not to. It's been very exhausting calling everybody and telling everybody that I'm gonna be, that I'm leaving. Um, Hazel Park's been my home for the last decade. I've made a lot of friends here. Hazel Park has left its imprint on my heart. A piece of my heart will always be with Hazel Park. I've enjoyed serving you, being your voice. And I hope I've made Hazel Park a better place. Please continue to be involved. Contact your elected representatives. Remember to vote. Government at the local level has the most direct impact on your life. It is the people here at this meeting that make sure your garbage is picked up, the water flows to your house, that the lights are on in the streets for everybody's safety, and the snow is cleared. Everything happens at the local level. A lot of stuff is going on at the state and federal level right now. And that's the stuff that makes the news. But it's everybody here, everybody's sitting at this table, everybody on this screen that invests so much of their time. I had no idea until I was on council how much time, energy, and everything goes into this job. And it's been great. It's been a great experience. I have loved it. I have loved yelling at Ed. I love debating with my colleagues, doing everything I can to, to help everybody, calling, calling Tim in the middle of the night to tell him, hey, the water main broke for the fourth time. It's, it's just been such a great experience and, and we have such great staff here. The city, everybody responds so well. When you have a crisis, they're there to help you. And I'm really gonna miss, I'm gonna miss it here, but my life just, it took me in a different direction. And so, um. I'm gonna miss all of you. And I look forward, I'm still gonna be around, you're still gonna see me, I'm still gonna be volunteering here at the city. Um, I'm gonna continue bringing everybody, Great Art Fair every August. Doing what we can to, to promote art in the city. I really believe in the cause. I believe in the city. So just thank you, everyone, for, for welcoming me, for serving with me, for partnering with me on projects. I just want to say thank you to all of you. It's, it's made a lasting impact on my life and I'm really sad. Thank you.
Amy, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the board for helping, working with us all, giving your input. And it's, it's a thankless job. We all do it for the benefit of our, of our city and help each other as much as we can. And I think that's all involved from all of us as board members. It's just like you said, it is, it is, it's wonderful to feel and help. Sometimes you don't get the appreciation, but we are the first responder to the open government here from people that come to us. And thank you for serving. Anyone else like to give?
I think that was the statement.
No, actually, this was.
It's been, it's been a pleasure serving you. Now, you appreciate all of your help that you provided me when I decided to run for office. You were a huge help. It can be a thankless job, but I thank you for doing what you do. So I know you're moving on to another community. Our loss, their gain. I don't know if you're gonna run for Southfield, City Council or not, but good luck to you if you do. And if you need help out of your campaign, let me know.
Amy, I've appreciated your spirit and your energy, the ideas, you know, what you, you know, you put your heart right into this. Been interesting and Amy and I, not everybody would know, we just have some different connections in our other lives. It's interesting to meet you and work with you in a different perspective. Good luck in the future. And thank you. Alyssa?
I feel like everybody already knows what I'm gonna say, but Amy's one of my best friends and when she told me she was leaving, I was devastated.
We had our cry session.
Yeah, we already had this. I was devastated, but I'm happy for her because how do you not be happy for somebody who is really following what they need in their life? I appreciate all of her partnership here. I don't think I would have run for city council if it hadn't been for her. I mean, literally, our story of running was, I'll run if you run, you run it, I'll run if you run, and then you ran. And it's been one of the biggest adventures I've ever had with a close friend. And I'm really grateful for all of her hard work and I'm really grateful that she's going to stay on with Arts Council and continue to help us develop the art here in Hazel Park because it is such a valuable commission. And I love you, Amy. You know that. Everybody knows that.
Thank you. Mister Mayor, on behalf of the staff, I'd like to thank Councilmember Aubrey for the service to the City of Hazel Park. You know, she's leaving council, but she's not leaving the City of Hazel Park totally. She's gonna stay on the Arts Council and look forward to working with her next year to have the best art fair ever. And we'll still see her around. And I want you to know, Amy, you will always be part of the Hazel Park. So never forget that. Wherever life takes you, wherever you end up, never forget Hazel Park and never forget that you're always part of it.
Thank you.
I want to remind everybody that our local restaurants and, and retail are all open still for business. Please make sure that you shop local this holiday season whenever possible. We, Main Street right now, Main Street Hazel Park right now, is actually, we have a holiday campaign that we're running called By Golly Be Jolly. Shop Hazel Park this holiday season. So if you see any of our posts from Main Street on Facebook, an easy way to support local businesses is to just even share and like the post so that all of your friends can see it. We have a series of videos that are coming out that's mixture of new and old businesses. And we will be also creating graphics that will be for all of the other businesses that were not able to make videos for. I would like to thank Main Street Oakland County for a grant that we received that helped us actually produce those videos. They, they worked with us to help us get that grant, so it's wonderful. I'd also like to remind everybody that the holiday Christmas light or the Christmas light contest will be, you can still submit homes this week. It's on social media, it's on Facebook. The form is, if you see a house, the neighbor's house, or your own, and you would like to submit, please do so. If you need to, reach out to me directly. You can, my email address is on the city website. Also, I'd like to thank Ashley Capital for sponsoring that, because you can win up to five, or you can win five hundred dollars thanks to Ashley Capital. And I'm pretty sure everybody can use an extra five hundred dollars for the holiday. Thank you all and remember to shop local.
Mister Mayor, if I may comment, I want to thank Councilman McCall and the Main Street Hazel Park team for their hard work on that. Those videos are very high quality. I think that they're helpful. I hope they're helpful. And just to add a sentence to what he said, if you can buy a carryout or something from our local restaurants, please, if it's carryout food, order as much as you can. Unlike the first shutdown, when there was federal monies and assistance, there's no care's act. There's not, there's very little in terms of resources to support these businesses. So it's crushing and some of them are holding on by their fingernails. So please, any amount of business that you can give them, that carryout order that you make tonight may keep that restaurant in business. So please consider ordering from local businesses. Get good work.
Thank you.
That really, a few local videos and very, very important.
This has been a crazy year. Hopefully, happiness, everybody, twenty twenty. I want to just, these meetings, if everything seems normal, it takes a lot of effort. I want to thank all the staff, administration, major. Make it operate legally, help us do the work with the people that we're elected to do. Just to make things look like they're normal, it takes a lot of effort. Appreciate it. Thanks for everybody that participates in the meetings. If you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thanks for coming out. Have happy holidays. Stay healthy. Peaceful. Celebrate however you choose. Let's just be safe. I'd like to thank you everybody for coming out this evening. I also would like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving. Hope everybody enjoyed and was safe. A happy new year for the future, hopefully this time. I'd like to say to Amy, best of luck in your endeavors and hope to see you around town. And sorry to see you go. The hardest thing to give up whenever you run for something, it works a hard thing. And to the rest of.
And to the rest of the council members, I'd like to say thank you for your success, working together and trying to facilitate work through issues that we had in 2020. One of the issues is assuming, as well as anything else, that it's very difficult sometimes to always get together and do things. They were all kind of homework bound at this late stage with the restrictions. We're doing what we can to sustain. And I feel very bad with the restaurants and vegan businesses already, getting imagine what they're going to be trying to hang on. And my business is affected, but not as definitely affected as the restaurants and some of the other industries that have been abruptly changed forever. And I feel for them, and I wouldn't want to be an issue. But I really feel for them this time. And to see all the other businesses that around the country are closing because of this. COVID-19 was not part of making or choosing the way with the witches on anybody. But we're having to deal with it, and I think this is Americans we're doing with the best we can and making the best of it. We will survive. We will strive for it. And I think that our perseverance as Americans will be the best we can ever be. Thank you for coming out.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an executive session we need very briefly. I believe that Amy was asked to call with the numbers, so they can call in. We need to go into the executive session very briefly to discuss pending litigation lawsuit, Lawler versus Community Department. Very much in your executive session, I'll move, I'll motion to go into that section.
Support.
Well, we're back to a regular session from exec session. I'd like to have the motion to adopt the comments in the exec session, please, and accept the recommendation. I'll move to accept the recommendations of the administration regarding pending litigation department. Any more discussion from the other council members? Do you approve? Do, whatever you call it. Anyways, motion stands, session passes, not any motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn. Only once, one question.
That's your last report, Amy? She did.
She's a born, maybe I'll reexamine. Anybody? Such a going home? No, thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Amy.
You don't have to go home.
Thank you, Amy.
You don't have to go home, but you can stay here.
Try to sit council meeting again. That's twice now. I'm done. No more trying it for the council meeting.
Hardly hear you.
You hardly hear you.
Oh, her headphones.
She's muted.
Not even worse, you're muted.
I hear you, Amy.
They really can't hear you now.
My headphones broke. I'm sorry.
We should all learn sign language, things. And I'll ask you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Payback. Oh, we can just close it. Let's take, let's go. Well. We lost only 100 points. I was just saying. Once you get over 100 bucks. I think you're.